Twenty twenty five meeting to order and we will entertain motions.
I move that we enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment history of particular individuals, ongoing negotiations, possible litigation and superintendent evaluation.
Second.
Moved by Jill, second by Adam. Discussion, debate, dialogue. Seeing none, all in favor. The motion passes unanimously. We will be back as close to seven P M. As possible. Executive session. And if I can find the right agenda, my apologies. Any modifications to the agenda? Hearing none. We'll proceed with our agenda to item four point one. Public comment period. We have a number of folks who are signed up to speak. A reminder before we begin, each speaker will have three minutes to speak. If you are close to completing your statement, we'll try to give as much flexibility as possible to let that take place. The board has scheduled a half hour in each agenda, up to a half hour in each agenda for public comment. Should there be a need to prolong that, the board can do so by majority vote and emotion to make that happen. And and a reminder, as I try to say during these times as well, to be mindful that we are not one able to respond about particular situations, personnel or students. And we ask that anyone who speaks not speak directly to any particular or use the name of any particular individual or students as well. And so my colleague will assist with the names and please give us grace if we if Jill mispronounces.
We'll start with Marali Starman.
And if you could speak into the microphone, it helps people at home who are listening in the audio recording as well.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Marali Sidraman. This is the first time I'm at one of these meetings. I'm from a family of teachers. And I myself taught for many years. I taught computer science. And the reason I'm here today is because I understand there is a discussion concerning artificial intelligence and using them potentially to replace teachers. So just so you get an idea, I was introduced to artificial intelligence probably before many of you were born. So I have followed this forever. All right. So if you have more interest in hearing on this topic, I'm happy to talk about it later privately. But here are a few brief comments they have. So. Yeah, you know, artificial intelligence, one may to look at it, it's like a sophisticated automated answering system. You know, once upon a time, you might remember when you dial something, they would say, press one, press two, and you know. And then after that, it went to, oh, tell me what your problem is. You can say accounting or something and then then it got a little more intelligent. You know what I mean? So you can think of artificial intelligence being a really sophisticated thing along these lines. But what happens is it's useful somewhat in the absence of a human operator, a lot of places, especially after hours, they can't staff it. So they put one of these answering machines in there and it helps you a certain way. But many of us, you know, end up saying representative after one. Because what it has just doesn't get what we want. And this is exactly what's going to happen if you put just artificial intelligence systems to replace teachers in schools. Unlike others, students, once they are frustrated, they are not coming back. All right. The other thing about AI systems is they hallucinate. Have you heard of this thing called hallucination? What it means is it really just lies. So how frequently does it lie? So there is a New York Times article. This is about OpenAI. It says something like there is a new system O three which hallucinates about thirty three percent of the time. So that one in three responses, it might say something that's totally not relevant. Okay? So if you know the topic area, you might say, oh, it's just talking nonsense and you can understand it. If we ask you to design a bathroom and if you if it puts the toilet in the middle of the shower, I'll finish the minute. You know, so so we'll understand that's a problem. But if you're a learner, you don't know the topic. You don't know what you don't know. And that's the problem. Many of the problems that we had with Zoom and remote learning, they are going to be there with the AI. So will we replace teachers with the AI? You know, some people might say it's low quality, but really cheap. So society sometimes tends to go that way and we have to be careful. There are a lot of people putting a lot of money into this to make this happen. As public, as parents, as students, you have to be watchful. Teachers are there for you and count on them. Don't count on technology. Thank you.
Thank you.
Julie Gorman.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak here. I am here tonight to talk about the graduation and the idea that there are two ceremonies. I've been a member of the living here in the community or different locations since nineteen ninety four. I'm a graduate of proud graduate of Homer High School. And but here in Ithaca, I think the our very unique community that we're all mostly proud of. We've gone through a lot of things over the past years, especially because of COVID. And when this notice came out about two different graduation times, it broke my heart. Broke my heart. I have twin boys that are seniors. I don't have any other children. This is my only graduation I will ever attend. For Ithaca. For actually, I should say that for my own family. I did attend last year. It was very sad that I attended the end of the first session and one of the boys that I went there to support was pretty upset because a group that he thought was going to be there were not there. So I have reached out to a couple people within the district, Jen and Havi, and spoke with them and I got the response about these rain dates and what the facility can or can't hold. I think that's asinine because we know Ithaca has had dramatically larger classes than our three hundred and fifty that we have in the current twenty twenty five class. I see certain parents a lot because of the sports that my kids are in. But I just ran into a parent this past week that I haven't seen them since Cuba Heights Elementary School. And they're like the most amazing couple. And they're they've got a great son. And I look at graduation as a unifying time, an opportunity to see everybody in the school district. I started a petition. I did share that with the board, so I'm hoping some of you have seen that. We have up to about two hundred and sixty six signatures. I have had my kids and myself have been canvassing people to ask them, you know, what your objective to consolidating or not consolidating. There's a huge objection to the early time because of the heat. Some people did not sign the petition because I didn't indicate whether it would be the early one or the late one, because frankly, I don't know. I didn't know where to start. But it's pretty clear that the five o'clock time is a better time, not only for students who don't want to be in the heat, but for families that actually work in the middle of the day, in the middle of the week. It's ridiculous. You know, I graduated, the whole school was there. We were in an inside facility. We did not have to worry about a rain date. So again, for those of students that are here, maybe you saw the petition, maybe you didn't. If you agree or disagree, you know, obviously want to know, you know, your feedback, but we are well past COVID. This is ridiculous. We need to be an inclusive school, increase our school spirit and get a time that's realistic for all families and all students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Mary Beth. I can't read this last thing. It is Incan. Okay.
Hello, and thank you for letting me speak. I'm gonna read. My name is Mary Beth Incan and I have had two sons, Zachary and Miles Neely, who have gone through the Ithaca City School District. One is a senior, just graduated from RPI. He graduated from Ithaca City School District four years ago during COVID. Karen Arnold did a phenomenal job of making graduation even possible for those students. We had three separate graduations at that time. We now are four years out of COVID and still having separate graduations. ICSD is about inclusivity and community and getting everybody together, including all. What is inclusive about two separate graduations? The beauty of graduation is appreciating and congratulating everybody who have gone through ICSD from kindergarten to twelfth grade. It's about families celebrating their students and the bond students and families have created over the last twelve years. When you have two separate graduations, that's impossible. We are fortunate enough to live in a town with two universities. If this is impossible to have at our beautiful athletic facility, which I find very difficult to believe, why can't we go back to Ithaca College or somewhere else? Please explain this. Secondly, my other major problem was the fact that students had to sign up during the school day. I know it was during universal lunch at eleven forty five. This just boggles my mind. Many students use that time to meet with their teachers. I understand that students are given plenty of time to know what time it is to sign up. However, these are seventeen year olds. So that might have made that meeting with the teacher or they might have been five minutes late to sign up. I know my son missed the time to be with his friends and I emailed Jen Doppler as soon as I found out. It was at twelve thirty one. At that point, she told me it was a first come, first served basis. A day later, I was informed. It'll be a lottery. Make up your mind. Are we inclusive or are we not inclusive? Are we a lottery or is it first come, serve basis? This is coming from very frustrated parent. Thank you. And I believe in Ithaca City School District. As you, many people know me, I am all about community. There's a huge mural on your on this school because of which I wanted it to happen during COVID. And let's get us together. Let's have one graduation for these kids. Thank you.
Karen Getson.
Hello. My name is Karen LaFace. My husband is Andrew Getson. I have three children and the older two graduated in twenty twenty. My children graduated in twenty twenty and twenty twenty two, and I also have a son who is a junior at the high school. And I am here. Well, first of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am here on behalf of the Ithaca Boys Varsity Lacrosse Team. Maybe some of you have heard about this, but we wanted to make the board aware that due to an administrative guffaw this season, the team was required to forfeit three games. So from winning twelve games, they were switched to winning nine games, which is not the main reason that most of us are concerned, but clearly this is upsetting and concerning for the boys and for the parents because it does have some consequences for their season. But we are also concerned about the deeper implications that this is kind of shining a spotlight on and compliance and maybe some other issues that we've been concerned about with the athletics at Ithaca City School District. The parents have a meeting tomorrow at six P M. At the Welcome Center with some administrators and we would appreciate the presence of Dr. Brown and any board members who would like to come to that meeting. And I also want to let you know that we plan to return after we've had that meeting and have had some time to learn some more about what's happening. We'll be hoping to come back at another board meeting to talk about it a little bit more in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. M B N? No, that's you already spoke, Mary Beth. Did you write sign in twice? Okay. Okay, we'd love to hear you again. Kelly Cartenili, Cartenini, Cartini. This, if you don't print, this is what happens to your name.
It's my problem. I keep my fountain pen.
I'm Kelly Cartmill and I actually have had two children already graduate from Ithaca High School, one in twenty twenty one and one in twenty twenty three. I myself, my former classmate up there in the corner, I graduated from this high school in nineteen ninety three. I know I look so young. I have to tell you, it's it's disheartening to hear that we still are doing graduations separate. I remember my graduation. It was in Barton Hall. We didn't use Ithaca College then. We had it in Barton Hall. I graduated with all my peers and it was a very big deal. I was sad when my son in COVID obviously could not graduate with all his peers. It was difficult. And two years later, when they still didn't change it back, my other son had to do the exact same thing. And my children, which many of some of you know, they play many sports and they were always involved in many different activities and knew all different groups of friends. I think my son Zach literally has like ten different groups of friends. And unfortunately, in that scenario, he didn't get to graduate with all of those people and that's really sad. I have a daughter who is going to be a ninth grader. And hearing this, I am greatly concerned that if we don't figure this out, I don't want four years from now for my daughter to still not graduate with all of her peers. It doesn't make sense in Ithaca City School District. We are all about equality. We are all about inclusivity. We can't claim those things and then have a graduation to somebody at two thirty in the afternoon and one at five. I can tell you why it's popular for five. I have staff members at three hotels in this market. And both times my kids graduated, other kids were graduating with them and they had to take off time from work and didn't have that time to take. We are not making that equitable and we're not making that inclusive for people who are working families. We just aren't. And so I implore you to really think about this and take the time to change this. We should not continue to do this. It was something that worked in twenty twenty one. I'm appreciative of Karen Arnold. She did make that possible for those students, but it's not something we should still do. And I really appreciate you all taking a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Next up, Sam Holmes.
Hello, my name is Sam Holmes and I'm a senior here at Ithaca High School. I'm here today to speak on the inherent unfairness of holding two two graduation ceremonies. On paper, having two identical ceremonies promotes a free will choice around the personal timing of one's graduation, while also having the amount of students walking across the stage. However, within just ten minutes of these signups opening, these two identical ceremonies have become a five P M. Group of everyone and the two P M. Group of everyone else who didn't get a spot. One of my best friends, Miles Neely, whose mom, Mary Beth spoke previously, hi, Mary Beth, was one of the unlucky students who was preoccupied during the ten minute mad dash to sign up for the later graduation slot. Miles and I have grown up together as best friends for masked COVID bike rides. So our hockey senior night, Miles has always been by my side. Yet at this turning point in our lives, a moment that signals the ending of our innocent childhood and the daunting beginning of the next chapter of our lives, I'm now faced with a saddening realization that he will not be there. And likewise, I will not be there for him. Every counterargument to the single graduation proposal that I have heard stems from logistical concerns. I urge you not to think of this graduation purely in numbers, amount of chairs and a list of names. Rather, I beg, sorry, rather, I beg you to see that this graduation represents us, the entire two thousand and twenty five senior class. Moving on from the halls we have walked for the last four years, the teachers and aides that tirelessly supported us throughout our journey and most importantly, each other. Thank you for your time.
Last up for this evening, Patty Sipman.
Hi, my name is Patty Sipman. I am a teacher aide at Fall Creek Elementary. I mostly work with special needs kids. I am also the president of the Education Support Professionals Union for the Ithaca City School District that represents teacher aides and teacher assistants, and I'm here just to be present while you take a vote on our contract. And I'm not going to go into the details, but our negotiations were quite protracted. And I just want to say, thank you for your service. I'm very mindful that you are not compensated for this. And I'm not naive enough to expect to agree with Dr. Brown or the board one hundred percent of the time. But I do thank you for your service and I respect your time. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I want to thank everybody who came to speak. This would bring us to board responses. And before we begin, I feel compelled to say that there are times in which folks come to have a conversation with us in which we humbly ask for just a moment of grace and that we will most likely respond in much more detail at the following meeting when we're able to canvas, gather information, not misspeak, not overpromise, not underpromise. I hope those things make sense. But with that being said, let's see if there are any board responses to the comments that we heard this evening.
I'd be happy to jump in first. Thank you all for coming and and sharing your perspectives and I want to say to Julie and Mary Beth and Karen and everyone else who came to to speak about the graduations that I'm speaking as one single board member here. I'm with with eight, a group of eight, and so I am only one person, but I can say that I was like totally floored when I found out that there were two graduations. My kids are still in elementary school. So I I didn't know about it right away, but I I it just makes absolutely no sense to me either. I also know that I'm not, nor is the board, the ones that get that are making these decisions. And so I have been really eager to connect with the people at IHS who are in charge of making the decisions to better understand why why we're still doing this. So I I thank you for coming. I I was the the petition was shared with me through a senior about a week ago, and so really appreciated seeing that. And I'm glad that that folks are speaking up because honestly, when I heard about it, I hadn't really heard all that much from the community about it. So it's, you know, I I'm glad to hear it and I hope that we can either find out that there's some really, really, really good reason why it's happening that we may not know about or or that there might be able to be work done for for future graduations so that so that everyone can be together again. And I want to say specifically to Sam, where's Sam? Where's Sam go? Hi, Sam. You talking about Miles just like literally sent shivers down my spine and thinking about A, I'm just very glad that you have such a wonderful friend. And also that when my son graduates, I'm going to be totally heartbroken if he has a really good friend like that, that he's not able to graduate with, because I know that it's it's a really special moment to be able to to enjoy and honor with all of your friends. The the young woman who the senior who sent me the petition last week said that she jumped on at during lunchtime to try to also get into the to the later one and was only able to even just six minutes after after it opened up only was able to get into the earlier graduation. So I know that not only was it during the school day, but was also practically impossible. It makes me think a little bit about how people have to try to get Taylor Swift tickets and just kept pushing the button and that feels incredibly stressful and a huge letdown. And I can imagine everybody went back to class the rest of the afternoon feeling distracted and bummed out. So anyway, just my single opinion, but I really appreciate you all coming and sharing your perspectives. I Karen, I'm very sorry to hear about the frustrations about what's been happening, what happened with the lacrosse team. I've been on those emails and excited to see that that you will be joined by the athletics director and others tomorrow and hope that you guys can have a really productive conversation. I am coaching my daughter's softball team tomorrow, so cannot come, but otherwise would definitely be there. And I think that's about it. Thank you, everybody for coming.
Additional board responses. Thank you for everyone who came to speak. It's always great to hear from our students as well, especially especially when we're talking about long term important relationships. So I greatly appreciate your willingness to to share that. We'll do some additional research about graduation, having been on the board for I'm embarrassed to say, almost as long as some of the young people in the room may be alive. I think this is my sixteenth year. I have been on the board when we held graduation at Cornell and people did not enjoy that at times. We heard complaints. I've been on the board when we had Ithaca College and A and E Center and people not everyone like that. And I know this is vastly different. But I am trying to indicate that we've had some difficulty in trying to find something that appeases and or supports everyone at all points in time. And so I'm looking forward to learning more about our dual graduation and hopefully we will be able to present something or speak a little bit more directly about how we got to where we're at. Not just to the parents and caregivers and supporters who are here, but for me, humbly and respectfully, and no disrespect to the folks who are here, but to our students and speak directly to their ability and their experiences to to join one another as well. Like my colleague, also difficult to hear about some of the things that are taking place or the way what's the emails we've been receiving about lacrosse. We've had some conversations, have not had enough time as a board. Also recognize that there's been some significant administrative reductions over the past year, twenty percent with budgets and that will be taking a look at what does that mean across the board? And do not anticipate that we be here again moving forward as folks exercise their democratic process and go out to vote next week. But thank you for sharing. And then just in terms of process, I do feel like I will say this publicly. I would recommend to my board colleagues to not attend tomorrow to keep the process and the protocol moving forward. There will absolutely be a time or let me rephrase it. I hope there is not a time for board involvement, but there may be a time for board involvement, but we'll continue to be aware of what's taking place and I can follow up or folks can make individual phone calls or I'm happy to do so as well. And other board members can obviously make their own choices in that regard, but good to know that folks are meeting tomorrow and looking forward to the to the update there. And then there was one other thing. AI, I'll speak to that briefly. As an educator, I say this repeatedly, I feel bad saying it over and over again. As someone whose job is dependent upon teaching future teachers, I teach. As someone whose job is dependent upon teaching future teachers, I teach at Ethica College, Department of Education, and the Pre-Service Teaching Program. Under no circumstance is this board considering replacing any teacher with artificial intelligence. That is not the board we are. It's not the district we are. It's not the community I want to be in. And I have grave concerns about artificial intelligence for a number of reasons. But that's not where we're headed. And we may hear more about that soon, but that's, that's, that's not where we're headed. And then, not necessarily in that realm, but connected, I'll use part of my time to, to announce to the community that tomorrow evening at six thirty P M in this room right here, the district will be hosting, it's almost funny to say, a screening of the film Screenagers that will be talking about the use of technology and dare I say, the possible pitfalls and downfalls of technology, both inside and outside of the classroom. This is in anticipation of a, a bell-to-bell ban by Governor Hockel that will be instituted come September, or that is the request, not I just say the request, the requirement of school districts to have a policy in place by September, dare I say, late August. And so we'll be continuing on with that conversation. So I invite the community to come join us for the screening and the panel that will take place afterwards. I think that's all on my notes for now. Any other?
Yeah, I, I had a question about the graduation. I'm sure that people in the audience are curious. I'm curious for my own education. It's like, if, if there was an opportunity to potentially change it, what would be the drop dead date to make that decision? Because I'm sure there's a lot of logistics that go into it. I, I'm personally interested in seeing it be consolidated to one. You know, I, so I, I'm, I'm all for supporting that in any way that I can. And I'm just kind of curious of like, what are our next steps? Or do we even know that right now and timeline and things like that? If, if it could be changed, I don't know if we can, but I'm just curious.
I think that's the conversation we asked Dr. Brown and team to bring to us at the May twenty-seventh meeting to have those, some of those answers to those questions and give us a little bit more background and context about how we got to where we're at. Does that, does that work, Dr. Brown? Does that work?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah. And we'll couldn't even put it as an agenda item, if that's the will of the board as well. So it won't be just right, we will add it as an agenda item if that works for folks.
Thank you.
Does that work, Dr. Grant Weiss? Any other comments? Again, thanks, folks, for coming up to speak. That brings us to our next agenda item, which is student reps.
All right. So next week, LACS will embark on our annual trips week. Students will be going across the country and across New York. So this whole week encourages learning and exploration outside the classroom. It's an integral part of the ACS curriculum. We're all looking forward to it. Some trips will be headed to Asheville, North Carolina, Puerto Rico, the Aquasazi Freedom School in New York City, among other places. And presentations on those trips will be forthcoming around Stewart Park Day, which believe is set for June sixteenth. The board rep elections have begun at LACS. Last Wednesday, the ACS student body heard speeches from four, the four candidates, including Emily, running to become our board reps for the next year. All these speeches shared, you know, wonderful messages around optimism and hope regarding our next principal and just unity overall. So it's great to see that. I know that Stella and I, both graduating seniors, really look forward to that outcome. And then finally, for me, graduation and promotion. So as, as we head into these final weeks of the school year, we begin to approach some exciting dates. Eighth grade promotion has been set for Tuesday, June twenty-fourth at six P M with a showcase of eighth grade projects running from five to six. And then, of course, the official ceremony beginning at six at the ACS Amphitheater. If you all can make it, I highly encourage it. These students work, put a lot of work into their projects and they're very proud of what they do. I know when I promoted, people built guitars and computers and it's a fascinating thing to see. On that note, high school graduation has been set for Wednesday, June twenty-fifth at seven P M, also at the LACS Amphitheater. Like the eighth grade promotion, the official ceremony will take out, of course, will take outside at the amphitheater. And seniors will also show off their senior projects. On that note, seniors have also begun to plan their senior meetings. These meetings serve as a time for seniors to reflect on their high school experience with some staff, family, lowerclassmen, and serve as a great way to close out their high school career.
All right, thanks. It's crowded today. So on Friday, the, the biggest news of the past few months at LACS, a possibly intimidatingly large group of stakeholders in our school met on a hiring committee for our new principal. We interviewed several candidates, starting at eight forty-five A M and going to three thirty-ish, so it was quite long. And it was amazing to be a part of that group. And coming away from it, I'm feeling really excited. We were told that we are likely to hear the results of that in the next two weeks or so, so full of optimism and hope. We had another successful science PBAT day on Friday, something like eleven people presented and passed. For those who don't know, we use PBATS, performance-based assessment tasks, instead of regents to assess students proficiency in four subject areas, English, social studies, science, and math. All four happen in students' junior or senior year. The science PBAT has students choose an experiment to carry out, then write a scientific paper on their findings. Once that's complete, each student presents to a group of raiders and answers questions. Since I was on the interview committee on Friday and missed it, I presented today during eighth period. And I'm going to brag really quickly and announce that I passed with outstanding on my rubric. Thank you. It was so much fun. And as a, as a primarily ELA, social studies-focused kind of person, I'll say that it was really the only time in my life that I felt like a scientist. So as much as I might complain about PBATS, I really am grateful for the opportunity to go in-depth experientially into the scientific process. And I'll finish off by saying tomorrow's the last day of shadows. So those are like fifth graders who will come and go through the day with a middle schooler and see if they would like to come to our school next year. And there has been at least one lottery poll for next year's sixth graders so far.
PBATS sounds so fun. Our brains have been fried because of AP exams this week. But junior prom was last Friday at celebrations and the senior prom date just got announced for June seventh. And we're starting to hear some talk about how the new cellphone ban is going to affect I H S and implement it here. And so we've been hearing a lot of our peers start to, you know, have conversations and they have a lot of questions as well. So we're hoping to hear more talk about it in the coming months and also transparency around the policies. So it's like a smoother transition for everyone. And we are also starting new student rep elections in the coming weeks. And we're hoping to introduce newly elected students before this, this school year ends. And we're also curious about the district commendation ceremony and why it doesn't happen anymore. Because so many people around me are doing epic things and they deserve to be recognized.
So next Monday, our AP Physics One and AP Physics C students will head to Darien Lake for their end-of-the-year field trip as a way to celebrate all the hard work they put into this past year. Also, our senior trip is happening next Tuesday, and we will be traveling to the Pocono Valley Resort for the whole day. Also, a quick sports update, we've recently had a bunch of senior nights for sports, lacrosse, tennis, flag football, and track.
Great. Thank you, student reps. Board responses.
Just real quick for me, thank you from, for all of your report outs. Really appreciate it. Emily, I just want to say I like love hearing you talk about the PBATS and your experience with the science one. That's very, very cool. They must be really inspiring and exciting projects and speaks a lot to that kind of, that kind of evaluation of of your learning. So appreciate you sharing that. The district commendation ceremony, I guess I would, I would like to hear the answer also to that question. So just wanted to see if maybe Dr. Brown, you could speak to that in your comments today? Or if somebody, unless somebody else on the board has answers to that.
Wait till you, you want to answer it now?
I can answer now. It is a board of education accommodation ceremony. And in the past, it is something that has been done at the direction or the initiation of the board. And in the past, we have had administrative support allocated. It takes many, many hours to put that ceremony together. Through the budget process last year, that administrative support no longer exists. So if this is something that we want to reallocate the support for, we should have that conversation. But it, again, it was never a superintendent combination ceremony, it was a board of education's combination ceremony, which my team and I, we helped facilitate the work for. And I look at Ms. Tracy Arm up there, who's doing the work of three administrative assistants this year, as we cut to who were in that central office. I'm not looking at her now because I would be challenged to go to her and say, I need that extra ten hours a week four times a year to do that, because I don't know where she would find it. So that probably not the answer you wanted to hear, but that is the answer.
Very honest. Thank you.
Additional responses from board members? I guess what I'll say, just in response to what Dr. Brown just shared, similar to the conversation about graduation, that's probably time for the board to have a conversation about the accommodation ceremonies. Four, obviously, got to be a, a, a lot, even though, as Claire has said, there are people doing amazing things and need to be recognized in various ways. And with that being said, there probably is a happy medium that we can find. But let's gather some more information and some more research and come back to that. We've been asked that by a couple of folks as well. And so some additional conversation out to the community would probably be helpful about that as well. So more to follow, I guess. I guess what I'll, I'll say at this point in time. To our student reps, this is a fun time of the school year. So just sending you strength, support, joy as you proceed through this, you know, this, this last couple of weeks of the school year. So try to find ways to enjoy it. I know I'm going to be hunkered down grading a couple hundred final exams over the next couple of days, so I'm definitely going to be joyful. So we'll go from there. All right, if that is it, we'll continue on with our agenda. That brings us to the consent agenda, and we will entertain motions.
I move to approve the consent agenda items listed in consent agenda, personnel reports, students, and minutes of previous meetings as presented.
Moved by Adam, seconded by Jill. Questions, conversation, discussion? If it is a friendly amendment with the approval of the board, I would like to postpone our vote on the minutes of our last meeting. If that could be removed from the consent agenda, I don't know if anyone has any objections. Hearing none. So if that's okay, then we'd be voting on the consent agenda minus the minutes from our last meeting. Any other discussion or debates? All in favor? That is everyone that's here. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it. Dr. Brown?
Thank you for the opportunity, Professor. And I must say, you, you so eloquently spoke to a couple of the items that I had on my list, but I'll add a little bit more if that's all right. And first, on this morning in the PTA council meeting, I was asked about information around the budget. When will the budget vote take place? How can folks find information? I'll remind folks, you can go to our website. There's information there. We're going to be sending out information in our newsletters. We're going to be pushing information out via email and some texts are going to go out next week. And I will alert folks to their mailboxes where they will see the budget mail. And we reminded folks that every community, every household in our community receives, I don't know why I'm holding that, a budget mailer that has a lot of information in it. And folks today have forgotten that that comes out annually. And let me remind folks also, it's printed in black and white, for the folks who remember why that's, but anyway, we printed in black and white and you'll receive a budget mail with information about candidates and all of the information. Check it out. Two other items, really quick, artificial intelligence. A shout out to Catherine, I thought she was here, Jacob, that's my guy, Patty. As I'm looking around at these humans who've spent literally hundreds of hours this past year in conversations with me and the team around how do we invest in and support the experience for humans in our schools and primarily for adults in our schools. And a few weeks ago, there was a, maybe a four-minute conversation about how would non-humans be entered into our school in some hypothetical future. And it's been fascinating how much conversation that has generated. And let me be clear, as you said earlier eloquently, and I will say now, as the speaker here said he came from a family of educators and was a teacher too. I'm a teacher and from a family of educators. I, we have no plan to replace humans with a piece of technology. One, that technology doesn't exist. And I'm also a person who writes policy, and I'm, I tend not to write policy based on hypotheticals that don't exist. And at this time, I'm not prepared to or have the expertise to write a policy that would address something that I could not define other than an acronym. So when we understand what artificial intelligence is, or what it could do, or what it would look like in a school, maybe then we have a conversation from our perspective about its place in our schools or not. And that's it. So anyone who's thinking that we're wishing to or thinking about replacing humans and teachers with technology, I will ask you or invite you to pay attention to the hundreds of hours of teacher negotiations or to talk to Patty and folks who've been sitting in conversations, engaging in dialogues, and often as we don't agree, but we're engaging in dialogues in a face-to-face human way. And please not get distracted by a five-minute conversation about artificial intelligence. And you know, when I came here in two thousand and ten, I thought I was leaving conversations about graduation ceremonies. For the folks who've been in large school districts, we heard a lot of complaints this time of year around graduation, frankly, because we would start at eight A M and we would go all night. When you have multiple high schools, you have to stagger the graduation. So I would sit there in a robe at John Paul Jones Arena. Everybody knows where that is. It's home of the national champions, U B A. Anyway, we would sit in John Paul Jones Arena because it was the only place large enough to house a graduation ceremony with three hundred graduates. And we would be there all day and people complained all day. I don't like this time. I don't like that time. So when I came here, when we had one, when that first year, I was like, we got one graduate, nobody's going to complain. And then we found ourselves in Barton Hall and it was a hundred and twenty degrees in there. And I had that robe on. And the complaints we received for those first two years I was in this job around why in the world? And I was hearing words like, I hate to even say this, my mama would not be asinine, or don't make sense. And at the time, I had to remind folks, the people who are making this decision, and it was a decision you may not agree with, were humans. And they were balancing all the logistics and all of the challenges associated with making a decision. They know everybody was going to be happy about. However, because on those committees at the time, and even now, there were children and they were committed adults, they were making a decision that they know everybody was going to be happy about, and they didn't want to hear us call them words. So I remind folks today, like even when we went to Ethica College and I heard all the complaints, there, not enough parking, too long, it's at night. Karen Arnold was mentioned today, and I know the struggles she went through to make decisions during COVID when people told us not to have graduation ceremonies to do too. And I know Jason Trumble, as he was begged to keep two, when we could have went back to Ethica College. And he said, oh, we'll keep two, and how people were happy about it, and then we got a couple of complaints. So I just, if like with the academic calendar, if there is a perfect solution to graduations, please share with me. Because I haven't found one in twenty-five years of doing this at an administrative level. And I want to engage in the conversation about how to make this better, but please, as I remind folks all the time, we're talking about humans and more importantly, a committee of humans that includes children. As a community member, let's not use words like asinine, or it doesn't make sense. Because it makes sense to somebody. It just may, you may, just may not agree with the perspective or the decision, but let's just be mindful of language because it's important. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. School district business. Folks may see our agenda this evening and recognize that we have a single discussion item. That is by design in some regards, and by that I mean having spent months together for hours on end, committee meetings, special voting meetings, budget meetings. We have been doing a large amount of work to get ourselves ready for the budget and school board election that's taking place next Tuesday. And so this conversation has also been one that's been discussed a couple of times at multiple times in the facilities committee, at least one time at the board meeting. And folks in the community may hear us. And, uh, folks in the community may hear us use an acronym of OACM, uh, which is, uh, owners, construction. Uh, architects and management, right? Did I do the acronym wrong? I probably did. So these conversations have been continuing, um, but as the district considers. The possibility of a capital project to go out in December. Uh, to address some of the longstanding issues that we know are taking place and coming our way. Um, one of the conversations is around Ithaca High School and Boynton Middle School Heating and Cooling. And so we want to sort of continue this conversation and or come on down, Chris, you're the next contestant. I watched that this morning. Don't ask me why, so. We want to see if we can continue this conversation and or see if the board can come to a general agreement. No resolution, no vote is needed. But can we at least be, begin to push in a direction that we would feel comfortable with? Um, as decisions need to be made in, uh, some sort of a, of a fashion. So. I don't know the best way to proceed. Chris, you, um, you weren't at our last meeting, but you've been in all the other meetings and been the most informed. What's taking place? I don't know if board members have questions. I don't know if board members want Chris to review some of the information. Uh, Chris, I don't know if you had a, a plan of what to begin with, or, uh, Dr. Trip, uh, trying to figure out what's the best way to proceed.
I do.
Let's hear it.
Thank you for having me again this evening to continue this conversation about heating and cooling at Ithaca High School and Boynton Middle School. There is a presentation. There are two slides. Um, I am seeking direction from the board about what your priorities are. Hopefully, this data will help guide a discussion. To give me some feedback. Why am I asking for this? There are two reasons. One is so that. We can provide direction to contractors who are currently doing work in Ithaca High School and being patient. Um, the second reason is to help us all in planning the next capital project referendum. So. With that. I'd like to share. More numbers. Okay. A lot of these numbers we've seen already. I'd like to present. Some information. From a different viewpoint, hopefully to help. Garner some direction with regard to what is the priority of the board. As you remember, we're considering. How to heat and cool Ithaca High School and Boynton Middle School. We have looked at various ways to do that. With various sizes, various capacities of essentially air conditioning. And we've looked at two different systems, a traditional system and. A. An alternative system. What this chart represents, talk you through it. Um, I have two that are nearly identical and I'll talk you through the differences between the two and then. Open it up for discussion. That said, please ask me questions as I'm sure you will, um, if you have questions as we go through. This chart represents the different options that we've considered. In rank from lowest first cost to highest first cost. So if we look at that bold column that's right in the middle there that has some salmon colored highlighting. That is the order of these options. If there are any questions about what the options are, I can certainly explain them. Hopefully with the abbreviations, um, and the previous discussions, folks. Know what those mean. One sees that if you order these solutions in rank order of first cost. We could also call this construction cost. Just by ordering it that way. We see that the least expensive options provide cooling and heating. To Ithaca High School and not to Boynton Middle School. That would follow because they tend to be smaller systems. You're doing less cooling. You're only doing one building's worth of. And naturally, at the bottom of the chart, um, are the options that include a system that. Contemplates cooling at Boynton Middle School as well. The highlighted cells. Are the values within each of those two clumps. That are the lowest value. So lowest first cost in salmon. The lowest 30-year lifecycle cost for each of those two clumps. Uh, in blue and the lowest carbon dioxide. Emissions over the life cycle. Those represent first cost. Long-term cost and environmental impact. And so those are the three values that I'm asking for direction. On which shall we prioritize as a way of making this decision? There is another version. I'm happy to flip back and forth between these two. That. Orders from lowest cost to highest cost based on lifecycle costing. With the very same cells highlighted. I offer these two graphs as a different way of thinking about this decision. I'll point out also. Magnitude. We see that. The change, and we've talked about this in previous meetings, it's not highlighted here, but. The change in lifecycle cost as a, as a magnitude of change is much less than the. First cost of the systems, especially when you're comparing similar sized items. Um, so as we talked previously, that, that is likely not the primary reason to make this decision. But again, I entertain questions now if you'd like. Uh, or observations about this with the, um, with the hope of. Getting some direction about what, how you'd like to move forward.
Can we go back to the first slide? Board members' questions, comments?
I have a, a new question from last time based on, uh, my news junkiness. Uh, Washington Post this week just listed a, a study about cities and sinkage and, um, subsidence rates. And I just wonder if we know anything about how ground source heat pump. Technology might affect potential sinking of cities, much like. You know, other issues. Do you know anything yet?
This system is proposed as what we call an open loop system. So it essentially would be. Sucking the water out of the aquifer that we know to be about 150 feet down from. Test borings, um, at the Science Center, which has been using this kind of system for decades. As well as a pilot program over near Aldi and the DMV zone. There would be a similar number of extraction wells that's sucking the water out of this aquifer. We exchange the temperature inside the building and then we put that water right back into the aquifer. So there should be no net change in the amount of water in the aquifer.
Okay, that's perfect. Exactly what I was hoping.
The, um, the cost for this is, I understand that there's the first cost. And then there's the lifecycle cost. When we're putting this into the capital improvement project, which number are we using to represent the cost?
The first cost.
What's that?
The first cost.
First cost only. So the maximum cost, if we're going to cool both schools. Um, is we're asking for the community as part of this capital improvement project to include 6.2 million dollars.
That's correct.
Max.
Additional questions, board members or comments?
I mean, my comment is, I guess that I'd like to use lake source cooling. Um, and ground source heat pump and, you know, have the least CO2 impact possible. It's just my one, one, one person's opinion.
When we looked at an earlier iteration. Of the data. It seemed like it was a more favorable payback. For ground source heating and cooling than it appears to be on this. Um, did I misunderstand something? Because what I had hoped is that there would be. Something closer to a payback over the 30 years using.
So did we.
Okay.
This way of showing the data does not compare directly the alternatives like we had previously shown the data. I'm trying a different. Organization of the information, um, to see if this helps. The group, uh, with any clarity around what your priorities are.
Well, to that point, is there any way to quantify? And maybe this is not a financial conversation, but to quantify the CO2 lifecycle. Right? I mean, just by basic math, there seems to be some substantial increases, right? Post a three or 400% increase.
Generally, the cooling tower options. Use around two and a half times the energy and emit, emit about two and a half times the carbon dioxide as the, the ground source heat pump options. On average.
So. Having watched multiple facility committees. Our last conversation here, I'm also with Jill. The numbers are looking a little different than. The last time I saw them, but you're asking sort of about priorities and I don't know that it's an either or. Question about which priority it is. Um, I do know, if I'm not mistaken, that the sustainability advocates came to the last facilities meeting. They have asked to come to the May 27th meeting to speak with us as well. Um. At some point in time. One school board member believes that one of the primary. Concerns has to be the environmental impact. That our heating and our cooling is having. And so I understand that there may be. An increase in the 30-year lifespan, and I don't say this to be dismissive in any way, shape or form. But a million dollar change over a 30-year lifespan does not worry me as much as a significant increase. To the carbon footprint that is there. Or I think that there may be other ways to quantify financially savings that may not be captured here. Because we're actually doing something that's better for the, the environment, for the world. Um, and so I know we're going to be asked to be thinking much more about the decisions we make and the. Sustainability of them. And so I think I agree sort of what, what Adam was saying, that I'm. More inclined to find that median between cost and, and our carbon footprint. And I see a path there, but again, as one board member, I'm, I'm much more inclined to go down that path to explore. Much more efficient systems to heat and cool our buildings.
I have one, I have one more question. Sorry. With, with the first cost, is that, um, is that taking into account? Um, the rebate that we get, you know, by virtue of this being a capital improvement project, just because when people are looking at the numbers, let's just say at home. And we're looking at 4.3 million dollars because when we do capital improvement projects, we. Uh, half, you know, half the cost is sort of more than half the cost. If we got the percent 58% or something like that comes back. Um, by virtue of it being capital improvement, so, so. Is it actually in our real dollars when we're thinking about it? And we see 4.3 million and it's really something more like two, two million real dollars that we're actually going to have to spend? Where does that count?
Yes, that's fair. These. Are just first costs. And yes, you would be reimbursed by the state of New York at your aid ratio for a building.
Okay.
For building aid.
Any additional grant possibilities or?
NYSERDA has incentive programs for which these, the ground source heat pump system only would, uh, be eligible.
And are those included in these calculations, Chris, or not?
Yes, I believe they are. I could verify that. But I believe we made an estimate of that based on tonnage.
Thanks for asking about that, about NYSERDA. I was going to ask if it was being a grant or which plant this is part of. Um, but for our community, I know that Chris had introduced this as part of the capital. Um, project that are maybe Sean did that we will vote on later on this year. This is just one aspect. I just want. People to be reminded, there are several other improvements that we have listed that we will discuss over time. And before we go to vote. So I wanted to ask, so this, the environmental impact of the. Um, ground source and lake source cooling, our climate active, climate action justice group. If I have the second letter correct in our high school group, they would be impressed with the numbers of that. And, um. We, we have to work on the chart because I'm used to the other chart so much that I'm trying to. Connect the numbers with that. I was trying to pull the other chart up too. And I know it's, uh, it, this is just like with the. High school graduation. You can't always please everyone, right? And so.
I'll give you, uh, tell you a secret. The last slide in this presentation is the old chart.
Okay, all right. So and then it'll be in four dots.
Correct.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm just going to go back to first principles, just be 100% sure I'm reading this right. Uh. The last four columns on the right-hand side. Lower is better. And all of them, I just want to be sure I'm interpreting.
Yes.
Right. So lowers, okay, I just want to be sure I'm reading, so lowers better. Uh, so you asked us to prioritize. You know, I, I think from an economic perspective, if, if one is. Liquidity constrained or credit constrained, you do what you need to do to get to the next paycheck or to put food on the table next week, or people do what they do to get by. Um, but if you have access to liquidity, then oftentimes you could make better decisions for the long run. And. So from that perspective, we are fortunate that we have access to credit. We've got a. Formal mechanism to, to borrow money at competitive rates and we manage the cost of that borrowing at seven percent. So to me, it, it seems like we're in the very fortunate position, unlike a lot of families right now, that we, we can do what's good to do in the long run. Uh, and not make a short-term costly decision out of necessity. So to me, if I'm, again, if I'm understanding correctly. First cost is not important to me at all. Uh, I'm interested in the long-term cost. And, uh. I'm also interested in environmental impact. So, uh. You know, it seems of the, of the bottom four options. Uh, and I'm only looking at the bottom four options because I just don't think we can say to our, our hearts, working staff. Our teachers and our students that they should be working in the building with that air conditioning. So looking at the lo, the last four rows and really discounting the first cost consideration. Not again, be clear, not because I'm not worried about saving money, but I'm worried about saving money over the long run because we have financing. I guess I come down to Adam, if I'm interested in Adam's comment, right, that I come down in full agreement with Adam that. Uh, the third lineup from the bottom looks awfully attractive.
Okay, one more thing. Just you weren't here at the last meeting. That's. Not to bring attention to that, just. Where were you? Um, so, but I, but I think, uh, the way it was presented last time, it looked like when we were going to be choosing options as a board. It looked like if we wanted to choose an option with a cooling tower somehow, like that was in the first tier. Plan that we can choose, but if we wanted to go up to lake source cooling or something like that, that was coming in at the second tier. Plan. There were three, for those who know or don't know, there were three different options that we were presented with for capital improvement projects and we were going to choose. Between or among them. Um, so I guess my question would just be that. You know, if it's, if it's the will of the board based on conversations to go with a particular iteration. There's no reason why that can't be in the first tier, right? We don't have to, we don't have to spend up. In other ways to make it to the second tier and like clear some hurdles so that we can use the more environmentally friendly option. That's what it looks like. I thought it would, and the person who was here just wasn't sure about the answers.
Now that's entirely the board's decision.
Thoughts, reactions, recommendations?
Uh, I, I personally support the ground source heat pumps, um, source, I, um. Yeah, I, I think to your point, Sean, you know, if it's an extra million dollars or in the course 30 years, you extrapolate it out, it's nominal. Um, and I think the benefits environmentally, um, to me, it's an open. And I think the benefits environmentally, to me, it's a no brainer. I think it creates a lot of like other good opportunities. Just in terms of cost savings over the long run, so I I'm I'm definitely in support of it. I think, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, there's still some stuff that need to happen before we can even vote on it, like there needs to be drilling done to kind of just validate that. The aquifer is directly below and that we can do it in this this location, right?
Yeah, we would recommend some exploration.
Yeah.
To be able to refine numbers and gain some. Just knowledge that, you know, where the aquifer is exactly on the site.
So so there's a, there's a couple of steps that need to happen before we can even make the final decision and I recommend authorizing. You know, you guys to move forward with those explorations and find out, yeah, I guess like quantify everything and. Make sure it's even fewer and go from there, so.
And I just have one more comment because I, we're we're saying it's a difference of a million, but when I look at this and just for anyone looking at this, you know, okay, change at first cost. But we're saying as a board that. There's no way we're not gonna make sure Boynton Middle School gets. Cooling. So really, the change is even less because the option is either. First cost four point three million or first cost four point eight million. So it's really just half a million, right? Because there there's no, there's no world in which we would not look to. Upgrade the cooling system at Boynton. So it's really just a very nominal difference. Even. Since we're not considering not updating Boynton. Right?
Well, he did, I think he didn't know.
No, 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 I'm not saying him, but I'm saying us as a board when we look at this and we're saying, oh, it's a million dollars. I think it's, I think it's really. Far less than that. It's it's point five. It's half a mil- it's it's five hundred thousand dollar difference. That's it. Because we're doing two schools and so.
More what I was taking a look at to see if we were going to go sort of full. Ground source as opposed to a a dual method, right? Like, what does that sort of look like? But. But Aaron, that's that's a great point. And I think the the part that I'm also thinking about is something that my. This is my father speaking to me as a. Thirty year, thirty eight year machinist that were already doing part of this project. Which offsets some of the costs of finishing it the other way, right? So it's not like they're doing two separate projects, if I understood it right. That some of this project is already gonna be underway if we go down this path. And so. We, it would be economically feasible and wise to also do Boynton at the same time. Right?
Right.
To do one and then do the other does not, it's not in best financial sense. And maybe I'm wrong about that.
No, that's, that's an important point is the fact, as well as the fact that the boy, the boilers at both schools are aging out. And we will end up. Replacing them either with forethought or in an emergency situation.
Right. And so I I just like I publicly want folks to know, like, we don't take these decisions lightly, like, yes, this is green and we want everything to be. The lowest carbon footprint possible, but we're also being fiscally responsible. Like, we know. The strain that our tax, like, we know this, and so we're trying to spend the dollars in the most effective, efficient way possible. While also doing right by the environment. And to me, this is really beautiful.
Sean, I I wasn't sure if you were talking about having like one system, like tying Boynton and the high school into one system, which is one thing that we talked about, but I think, Chris, to your, what you said in the previous meetings is that. You guys need to investigate that because it might be better to have two separate systems, like that actually might be more cost effective. There there may be economies of scale by doing it together. But they don't know for certain just yet. And that's kind of part of like the exploration process, right?
Correct. There are two factors there. One is. If the two systems actually touch or not. And there is, are you hiring one contractor to do it all at the same time? And. Either way, you probably would be hiring one contractor to do it at the same time, and that's where you gain the the cost efficiency.
Yeah, understood.
Whether the pipes actually touch one another or not.
So if I understood and we can have a conversation, I understood you were sort of saying that you'd be in support of authorizing the first step.
Yes.
Right? Like, if we understand that we need to have some exploration, and then I'm wondering if, with the timing is for you, if that is a resolution that goes on the twenty seven. Agenda that authorizes the expenditure of funds for the exploration component. To gather more information as we learn, like to do it step by step. We don't necessarily have to make a decision. We're not, we're, we don't have to make a decision this evening, but we can get ourselves down to the the path, or is that? Would that be within timing?
Yeah, could I speak for a moment about the process, which would be if you're interested in a geothermal system, we would. Help the district issue a request for proposals to. Companies to drill a couple of wells, do the requisite testing. And we would. Bring to the board. Those quotes and you could award that.
So that would actually, we wouldn't even need a resolution. We would, we'd be voting on their receipt once we receive their request for proposals.
You'd be approving a proposal that meets with your approval.
So we, and eventually vote on an RFP about that, whatever that next step is.
Yes.
Is the board okay with? Authorizing touch and check to go out with the RFP around this to start the process?
Yes.
Yeah.
So none of these, the reason why I'm asking seems to be a general more of a straw poll. No one's being locked in to anything, right? The RFP will decide that will be the vote that we'll take around the expend, possible expenditure of funds. Additional questions, comments, concerns? I think you have some. A direction forward, let's see. Yes.
Thank you. Shall I take this direction? To also mean that we should provide the direction that we need to provide to contractors that are working right now. That. The future system will be a geothermal system.
I would be much, what is the timeline for which that? Direction needs to be given to our current contractors?
They're being patient and. Not. Asking for. Claims for delay. So. I've been asking for some direction.
For some time.
Before they get more serious about a potential.
So let's follow this train of thought for a second if we can. So. We'd like to give current contractors an idea of which way the board is leaning or heading. We're good, right? Is that what I'm?
More specifically, take this piping out and give us a credit or change the piping in this other way.
So then the other question becomes though, we do an RFP, we do some exploration and we find out that we are not able to do. A ground source heating system. Then where do we find ourselves?
If you're worried about that, we could provide direction to the contractor. Just to, just to remove work period from the contract. If we found ourselves in that, in that position, then. We could look at a different kind of ground source heat pump, not the open. Not the open well, but the closed well, which is what you have at Enfield, for example. So they're different technologies. So we could make that decision at that time. Or we could decide. We'll just do a traditional cooling tower.
Yeah, I'm not trying to prolong the process. I'm just trying to make sure that we're. Following a process that doesn't find us in a situation that costs us money as opposed to. Direction you want to go down. I saw some other. Is that Utah?
No, I'm I'm curious, you're saying we can do a closed loop system. I'm assuming that's the cost is a lot higher and that's why I didn't make it on here. So I mean, I I, that might change my decision. I mean, if it's twice as expensive. I might say I don't want to do ground source. Maybe we should do like air source heat pumps or some other option. So I'm I'm apprehensive as well to tell the contractor, like, yes, we're definitely doing this if we don't know that we can be doing it. So I I think, I think it's. If my experience, you know, with contractors is it's better to be honest and transparent and just say, hey, listen. This is what the board voted on, or this is what the board talked about. They want to do this exploration. They're leaning towards doing this. Are you guys willing to give us, you know, X amount of time so we can really, you know, narrow this down? I think people appreciate transparency.
Sure.
So I personally, I I'd like to approach it like that, but I don't know how other people think. So and 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 hearing from them, you know, getting their feedback. Maybe they come back to us and say, hey. Can you guys do it within six months? Then as a board, we have a decision. But I I'd like to have like an honest and open dialogue with them personally.
Absolutely.
Seems like we're all on the same page. Fantastic. Thank you, Chris. Thank you for your patience as well and for being here this this evening. Next agenda item is upcoming dates of importance. I think there's one on Tuesday, May twentieth. This is date of importance. Again, polls are open from noon until nine PM. You can find additional information on the district website about polling locations, about budgets and school board candidates. Again, please exercise your democratic. Right to vote. And one date of importance Emily and I will be putting out, we want to make sure we have it on tape as well. The next policy committee to our board colleagues will be a two hour policy committee meeting between four and six PM. On June third, so rather starting at five. That one, we know it's a difficulty for some folks. We apologize in advance for the start time. But given the fact that the school district has. At least three policies that are being required that we have to consider. In addition to everything else, one is Governor Hawke's. Bell to bell cellphone ban. Another is the governor has required or the state legislature has required. That all school districts have a school board liaison. Fortunately, we are ahead of that. And so that should be a simple one, but we want to make sure we modify it to our process. And then lastly, the government, the state has required that the district pass a policy. That encourages voter registration. And so we have a sample policy for that, which we may want to just modify as well. But those are three required policies that we need to get through in addition to the other policies that we've talked about. So. That will be June third from four to six PM. And then with HR following afterwards. And I think that's it. Board colleagues, anything else? And then if we get to see folks tomorrow for the screening of Screenagers, that would be great. Again, six thirty is the start of the film. And with that, we'll bring the meeting to a close. Have a good evening, folks.